...of directors, please come to order. Will the secretary call the role?
Jennifer Brand.
Present.
Rich Smith.
Here.
Albois.
Here.
Jeremy Miller. Jerry Ogle.
Here.
Jerry Nelson.
Here.
Amy Miller.
Here.
And Jeremy. Are you here?
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is perfection and approval of agenda. Second. Okay, do you want to add any additions or corrections? Any other?
Just the substitution pages. You had placeholders for three pages and we do have those for packet now. Pages 148, 149, and 153, that's your place there.
Okay, it's moving in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. We move in second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions on any of the information under the consent agenda? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the opportunity for any board members or other persons not already on the agenda to have anything to add at this time. I do have one request to speak to the board, and this is from Chuck Hildenbrand, also Michelle Huckins, and Nick Ford, and Ty Hatterick. They will discuss the issues I think on that.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason we're here, I guess, is kind of picking up on this. We know we're having some issues with the field wellfield at the middle school. We've been attempting over the last three or four weeks to somehow get successful bores completed. But they've run into a couple of serious underground conditions that we weren't aware of when we came into this project. The first one is, they had rock at 39 feet. We were trying to attempt to do some bores. And we'll kind of generate some pictures here to kind of help understand what we're talking about when we're going through this, so bear with me here. But yeah, the most major issue that we've been running into, we want to kind of go through how the bore system is done, and then talk about some of this major issue we've had with what they call a blue clay that's been experienced throughout the wellfield. So, we had kind of an introduction when we were out in the field there. We talked about how the bore machine is utilizing a rod to actually drive down low grade to get this pathway, or an actual open pathway for the tubes to come back into this bore field. And so, one of the things that we wanted to show you was some of the different depths that we're working with, and the things that we're not able to necessarily predict because of the depth below grade. We don't know everything that's below surface level, the different conditions that we have there. So, we'll get kind of a couple of pictures here generated possibly. No, that's right.
So here's your ground line. Here in like Chuck was talking about on site a few minutes ago, the meeting we had. You've got one line coming through here, one loop coming through at...
15 feet.
15 feet. And you've got another loop coming through here at 30 feet.
Right.
Then originally we had another loop, again for that system, down at 45 feet. So that's per the DNR recommendations to run the horizontal bores.
Right. And I kind of talked about, there's obviously a rock level, and below that rock level, there's aquifers and water sources down there. And so, what we've tried to do with this particular layout is stay above that rock level and work horizontally. And we've been very successful at doing this on several different sites and different schools where we have enough green space to do that. That's one of the key components, and obviously the middle school has that. We hit at 39 feet roughly, yeah, right about there, just kind of draw it in there. The reason I'm bringing this up, it makes sense here in a minute. At 39 feet, we hit that rock. And what we advised them to do was to not penetrate that rock and try to drive through it. But instead, let's take those 45-foot bores and actually, because we had additional green space available, do 30- and 15-foot bores. So any 45-foot bore that originally had, the contractor was able to re-lay out and put in 15- and 30-foot bores to make up for those. The wellfield still performed at its same thermal conductivity level, everything works. But we stayed out of that rock area and we protect the aquifer that's below there. The other thing that they ran into here, like three weeks or four weeks ago, was this really thick blue clay. And it's actually, throughout the entire field, they haven't been able to find a place where they're not in it. And so, the reason that's important is that the characteristics of blue clay, at least this particular blue clay that we're running to on this site, has caused them quite a bit of problem. Blue clay, you don't necessarily have to be familiar with it, but you just got to think of a really thick material that is almost like glue, and it's grabbing onto the tubes. And the process that these guys are trying to go through is, they're obviously sending their bore rod out, creating this hole. And they've tried different sized holes, they've done a lot of different things to try to negotiate through this clay. And that's what we spent the last two weeks, trial and error, trying to find different things that would work. All the things, the tricks that every contractor that I know who's done this, you know, they've tried those. They've had multiple contractors on-site to try to help with doing that. But almost every time that we've done that, we have not been successful at bringing back the tubes intact and being confident that everything is filled in. So what they're doing now, it's a little bit different, is they're using, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. So what they're doing now is we're actually using a different type of grout. And we're proposing actually to go to a graphite-based grout. And I'll kind of talk more about what that means and how that works. But the original grout that we were using required a very specific pump, and took quite a bit of time to switch over to get that pump hooked up. And all that time, the hole that they created is filling, and backfilling on itself because the clay is swelling. When you add water to clay, it swells. So you can think of this hole, it starts out eight inch. They have to use a little bit of water to help lubricate, to get in through the soil. But that water that they're adding in is actually causing the hole to just shrink up. And now we've got a hole that, instead of this, is down to this. And they're struggling to try to pull that bore back through. And the time it takes to run it out, they run in actually a third tube that's used to add the grout, and all these other processes that were part of the original specifications, so that we could use a real basic grout that performs thermally, does all the things we want to do, is cost-effective. It's pretty much the standard for all the wellfields that we're doing right now.
And the purpose of the grout in general?
Well, the grout, its sole purpose is, obviously you create a hole, and then you pull tubes in, and then you're going to have this annular space around the tubes. And you have to fill that in because we don't want air in there. And we want to try again to minimize the amount of water migration that's going through the soil and using these conduits to travel from the surface and get into any kind of groundwater. So we seal the holes up with a grout. And that grout's sole purpose is a thermal component where it gets it in direct contact with the soil, so that the heat gets out, heat gets into the tubes. That's the whole purpose of these tubes, is we use earth heat to heat the building, and then we also reject heat from the building into the earth. And the earth has the capacity to absorb massive amounts of heat, so it doesn't actually change the earth's temperature and it can absorb all this heat. And so it's a very efficient method to do heat transfer and air conditioning and heating. So getting back to what I was talking about, it all comes down to the existing conditions and this grout that they're using. We've allowed them currently to switch over to a, what they call a betonite grout. And they're using that directly with their drill rig. They're able to quickly get the bore done, and then they start pulling back this tube and filling it in with grout. And just in this last week, they've been able to get 15 or 16 bores done, whereas before they were struggling to get three or four. So, the timing is critical in order to get it out and get it back before this hole starts shrinking in and they start having problems. The grout itself is actually able to lubricate the tubes better, so that it can be pulling through that clay. The bad news is, is that the grout that they're using right now has thermal conductivity, which is kind of like R-value on windows. The higher the number, the more heat transfer you get. So, we've got an R-value, or thermal conductivity value on existing grout that's not meeting the criteria that we need. So we can't continue utilizing this basic grout in order to get the existing wellfield to perform like we want to. So, talking with the grout manufacturers, telling them all our conditions are concerned, the only solution that we've been able to come up with that we know will work and perform, provide the thermal conductivity, is what we call a graphite grout. And it's just that. It has graphite powder incorporated into it. Graphite, if you know what that is, kind of, it's basically a very good lubricator, and it also has an iron base, so it's a very good conductor. The catch is that it's not real common yet. It's a fairly new product, so it's not a lot of suppliers. It has, like I said, excellent thermal conductivity, so that it obviously is very advantageous to use it, but they're not using it a whole lot because the cost per bag is about four times what it is for regular grout. So our original specification is called for a basic betonite grout and sand mixture, which is what we've used on 99% of all our jobs, up until this particular job, we've used it on all of them. And we've been able to get the installation completed, and they've been successful without breaking tubes, and everything is gone as planned. With the unforeseen condition of this blue clay that they've repeatedly tried to work through over the last two or three weeks with different methods, that they've come back and basically said, in a letter, in writing, and I can share that later with you, here's the things that we've tried, here's the people we've talked to, we've been unsuccessful at getting these tubes installed, and we're seriously concerned about the viability of getting this wellfield done on time. They're also concerned, obviously, they actually broke, as of today, 10 tubes. Those tubes are going to get replaced, so those are unfortunately going to be abandoned in place. But they're going to replace those. But in order to maintain production of what they're doing now, and have the overall thermal performance that we're looking for, so we can heat and cool this building well, they're asking for additional costs to use the betonite-type grout versus just a standard grout. So those costs are above and beyond what they feel is on their, in their contract and the original specification. It's different from the original specifications. So, that's kind of what we're here today, is to kind of walk through where we come from, what are kind of the conditions that we're working with in this particular application, and what the qualifications are of trying to use a good graphite-based grout, and the costs that are associated with it. So, I'll let you absorb all of that, I guess, as far as what we're trying to say and why you ask questions, because I've been going through this fairly good.
How much extra cost are we talking?
The material itself, they provided me a cost breakdown. Total cost on materials with credits for the materials that they, on the old one, is $45,326. And that does not include, at this point, does not include any kind of markup that they are allowing in their contract.
Back on the grout, you guys, three kinds of grout?
Yeah.
The standard grout is what they started with?
Right. That's our standard specified grout that we use.
And that was used originally with this?
Yeah, the first 20 bores that were installed used that standard grout. It has the right thermal conductivity, is readily available, it's cheap, I guess for lack of a better word, comparatively to some of these other materials. And that's what we've used on all of our different projects that we've done with wellfield installations.
But then I thought you said the betonite grout is what you use 99% of the time?
We, I'll back up. The one that we use all the time is a, that standard grout. It has betonite in it, and then it has silica sand mixed in. So the two together are mixed and inserted into the bore, and it gives us the properties that we're looking for. It fills in the void, it has good thermal conductivity, and it is cost-effective. What they're doing today, what they did last week, is they eliminated the sand, the silica sand portion of it. The sand is heavy, it's very abrasive, it's actually the opposite of what we want, and it's very difficult to pump into the holes, it takes longer. And so they've eliminated the sand and used just betonite. When we do that, the thermal conductivity gets worse. And so we've limited to them to, they can only do so many of those bores that way, with the premise that we know at some point we're going to have to finish this project with some type of graphite-based grout to get all these holes installed, the way it's currently designed. So, what we're doing is we're looking at, across the field, if you think about it, an average, the original 20 bores had a thermal conductivity of .8. That's just a number that we know will perform at. The next 16 bores that have been presently completed have just betonite. They have a thermal conductivity of .45. So that lower number reflects the poor thermal conductivity. The betonite grout will do the remaining, which is going to be close to... Graphite-based grout. Graphite-based grout will do the remaining. So we get a total of 90 bores total, and so we're looking at 90 minus 20, 70? 55, yep.
Actually 28. I think it was 28 that you can do with the betonite.
Correct.
42 at the...
Correct. Based on engineering calculations, we know we can do a balance equation that allows us to do a distribution.
Am I adding, is it add-up now?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
So, the graphite grout has a thermal conductivity of .95. So now we're above. All of that being said, the average is all out. We'll have an equivalent thermal performance. We maximize the use of the standard grout and the betonite grout, and then come out at the end and provide that graphite grout at the end in order to get the thermal performance we need, to get the installations that they need. And our goal here, I guess, is to get these guys done and be successful and get these tubes put in, so that everything can get buttoned up and pulled together and stay on schedule, but also maintain the thermal performance.
Didn't we take, wasn't that boring taken out there, or was it just bored one time to see what you had down below?
The first one that was done.
No, I mean, the test bore, just the test bore to see what was there.
The test bore was performed for a thermal conductivity test. So basically, they came in, they did a bore, and tested it with the specific machine that tests how much heat the ground could take. That was the intent of that.
That was all, that was all that was, it wasn't for texture.
Did that bore, they couldn't tell what they had down there?
Well, what they did is they utilized, for that one particular bore, they used a betonite-type grout. When asked why they used that, it was basically for to expedite the hole. Their job, again, on that test well, if you think about it, they drove down here from Earl, did the bore, did it in one day. So they used something that was very easy to pump, very easy to get done, and the cost of the different number of bags was a small amount, it was one bore. So maybe they had $1,000 worth of additional cost incurred on them. But another crew coming down here for a second day would have cost them $1,500. And so they chose to use that betonite grout. Now, in the report, it doesn't stipulate that they had any problems. They really didn't clarify anything about the conditions. That was not the scope, it was not the intent.
The scope on their terms?
The scope on our terms. We wrote a scope specifically, giving them instructions on what to do, you know, as far as how they installed it. They were required to provide a grout that had a .8 equivalent thermal conductivity. And so they made up a grout that included some graphite, because it was easy to pump, and they just went ahead and did that one bore. Because they had a set amount of dollars that they were paid to do that. And basically, when I talked to them, their explanation is that, we usually do that because it takes less equipment. We can come down in one day, get it all installed and completed. If we were to do it the other way, we've got to bring more equipment down, we've got more manpower involved. But, I guess, the stress, the most important component of this, almost all of these test wells are done that way. And the important thing that they're trying to do is to match up what will be installed with the final product, which, it may not be the same grout, but it has the same thermal conductivity characteristics and everything else.
So do we lose any thermal performance by having those first bores?
Well, the first bores, the first 20 are right on, exactly what we used for our original calculation.
So just the 15 years?
28.
That won't affect our performance overall?
Not if you bring in a higher performing grout at the end, so your average is...
Right. We could have told them, stop work, don't do anything. And then we would have had to put in 42 plus 28 of all these, and we would have had a wellfield that's even better. But better doesn't necessarily mean you're paying more money, but you're not really getting anything better. The wellfield that's been designed is based upon how much heat the building is going to be needing or rejecting at one point in time. So we try to size that wellfield as close as we can with a reasonable level of safety factor, so that we don't come up short. So we've been very careful about limiting them on the number of grout, of betonite grout bores that they can do currently. We want to try to take advantage of that because that material is, again, readily available. It's cost-effective to utilize, but we just know we're not going to be able to make it up. If we just were to continue on, we'd come up with a wellfield that's short on heat transfer capability.
Could you make that up if you added a lot more bores?
Correct. That's the other option that has been kind of a plan B. I don't have an accurate cost associated with that, but we'd actually have to try to see if we could include, let's say, a 30% increase in the number of bores. And there, again, we'd have to find green space that we can do that. And it may potentially require actually boring underneath of the building, coming out to the front level of the street. Again, we can do that. We've done that on several projects. It has cost incurred. Every bore is going to cost additional cost to the contractor. They're not going to do that.
This is probably the most...
This one?
Cost-saving, this is the...
Right. And that's based upon experience and what we've been discussing with different contractors. They feel that if you get the graphite grout used, you're going to have the most cost-effective system, based upon all the different options we're looking at. We're also concerned about, as we make more bores, we've got to have a certain minimum GPM going through each loop. Our pumps are set, putting so many GPM out, so we've got to be really careful about, as we add more loops, reduce the total number of GPM per loop. So we're very careful about the engineering that goes into that as well. So, there's some other ramifications of adding loop, finding space. Obviously, there could be additional materials, like the loops that we have to get on-site. They're custom-made for this particular project, for length and everything else like that. So, again, we can get, it seems that right now we're successfully getting the betonite grout here, and getting it used and installed, and they're going to actually do a test, I think, here fairly soon, to try to make sure that everything's going to work as planned. But, we know that at this point, the contractor is looking at the additional cost for using a high-performance graphite-type grout versus what was specified. And that cost difference is, like what I said...
45, 386.
45, 386, yep.
And that's with the grout?
Right.
Number three? I hear there's stuff with the betonite.
Correct.
Correct. So we know sometime here in the immediate future, they're going to get that 28 done, and then they're going to have to proceed with a higher performance grout in order to keep the wellfield going. Now, as far as pricing, Nick is the general contractor's representative, I want to make sure that I don't overstate this. One thing that they've done to maybe potentially work in the owner's favor is, they've estimated net cost, the max amount of grout that they would expect to use. That means a perfect hole stays the same size all throughout. They know that that's not what's going to happen. They know the grout is going to start shrinking. So, they're keeping track of the number of bags they're using per hole, because they have a very specific mix ratio that they have to follow, and we make them log all of that information. Hopefully, the intent is, from that cost, they're going to start noticing that they're, instead of using 30 bags of grout, they're going to use 25 bags of grout, or 24 bags of grout. It's going to change whole-to-hole. But if this hole is truly shrinking like they're saying it is, and I believe them, it's going to start shrinking even after they punch this hole and start pulling back, they're going to use less grout, because there's less hole to fill. And so, they've given us a per-price cost for the grout, and it's like $29 per bag. So if we had, you know, less bags used per hole, they're going to then look at that and say, okay, we only used, what, 60% or 70% of that original amount, and they'll provide a credit for that grout that they did not use. Does that sound accurate?
That's my understanding from our little guy, yep.
So we've also, like I said, been asking them, because of the process that they're using, we're using less equipment, so the grout is easier to pump. It's actually, the graphite's lubricating, so it goes right through the pump, versus the sand material. Our expectation is, is that they're going to be able to quite a bit faster. And in this last week, they've met or almost exceeded, I think, their normal production. And we expect that to continue on all the way through this, almost 70 bores what they've got to do.
They are not going to mark this up, they're, take their regular markup on this new stuff then?
There is a markup that is associated with it. Per the contract, they are allowing a markup for the material.
But you said the $45,000 did not, or did not include that markup?
It does not. I gave you what I knew from what number they gave me. And so, there's our final change order price that would come down, and it would include the price of $45,000 plus a percentage for overhead profit that they are allowed to provide for their...
Change orders. Is this our, this is our problem?
Well, the way I have looked at it is that we have unknown conditions with this clay. I've tried to talk to several different contractors, as well as vendors, to see what other alternatives they can use. And typically, we've been successful, with, you know, clay being clay, it's different in all different areas. Every place you go, you've got to try something a little bit different. And we've been unsuccessful with everything we've tried. We spent two weeks with Vermeer Company, who is the manufacturer of the bore rig. The actual grout manufacturer came up from Oklahoma and spent several days giving advice and trying to find different methods that would work, and have been unsuccessful. So there's been quite a bit of time involved in trying to find a solution that would still use the basic grout with some type of additive. They have a lot of different little tricks that they do, kind of silly tricks, but it makes sense to inject materials that will help solidify the wall and keep it solid. But this clay is sticky enough and it's aggressive enough.
We've got it. I mean, we've, you can't farm it, so I know that.
Right.
And it gets it at about 20, or I don't know, 15 to 20 feet, it depends on where it is.
Right.
And you can't do anything with it.
Right. And as I say, that we haven't run into clay on other sites. It may not be necessarily the same type of blue clay, you know, they're calling it a blue clay. I'm not as versed on the geological terms, but the clay that they've run into here, again, they've attempted to use different methodologies, including, you know, making a larger hole, but it takes longer to do. And so it's counterproductive. The longer they are in that hole, the more time that is starting to shrink in. And so they have to be fairly quick in order to get it done. And they need as much lubrication as possible, so they're looking for something that, you know, a straight grout, getting away from the sand, which is actually the opposite, it's very aggressive.
Okay, but you're talking about that whole shrinking stuff with the moisture, and then, okay, now what happens when that moisture then dissipates stuff? Now have we got a void in there? I mean, that moisture's got to go somewhere, it's not going to stay there. I mean, that moisture's gotta go somewhere. It's not gonna stay there.
I guess, the way I understand it, from what we've been able to perform on previous bores, is this betonite grout is, is gonna fill up the void we have now. Yes, there's probably gonna be some shrinkage, but, um, we're capping it at both ends and trying to minimize any kind of water transfer. There's gonna be some clay that's gonna, that's gonna expand with that. It's gonna fill in there. Like I say, we've been, we've been able to provide excellent performance with all the different methods. I think the grout systems have been perfected where they prevent those voids. But that, that's what we've been understanding.
And the, is the important part is that where this green is shown, where the grout is, that that's where you don't have the air pockets.
Right.
If it happens out here against the clay and it expands around the outside, that's not as much of a concern as if making sure that this is as dense as possible.
I guess you think of it as kinda like a vacuum. I'm trying to remember what they're telling me. Obviously, once we get the air out of there, this clay is gonna try to shrink, so there's gonna be a vacuum. There's nothing, it has to actually expand together. So if you think of, you know, when you, it's trying to, to shrink back, it's gonna pull the grout with it. And that grout is, is dense enough that it can actually have some expandability to it and still maintain a continuous fill in there. So it's not gonna expand nearly as much as you're thinking, once we get full of, of the grout and eliminate any passing air pockets.
But I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to rationalize really who's responsible for this.
Sure.
Because we were told with the test wells, that everything was go, everything was gonna be fine, that they could do what we asked them, was asked to do.
Sure.
I mean, and I think that came, I, I think that came as a report back from Shire Paddy, that everything was gonna be fine for us to do, the boring and the, and the well could exist well. So, so if that's the case, I'm trying to decide who's responsible for this extra cost.
Right. Well, the original test bore, our intent was to make sure that we had good thermal conductivity performance, and we could take that test and use it to replicate for all the number of bores, and get an accurate number of bores. That's, that's what that thermal conductivity test was. Obviously, they were successful after completing the bore. And I guess, as far as the difficulty at the particular location where they did this bore, they, they didn't provide any additional information as far as difficulties with the bore itself.
But if they used graphite, they didn't have that difficulty.
Right.
And that's where we should've had the, that's where the extra cost.
I mean, I think they should've done the one that said what we were gonna do if that's the case for the test.
Sure.
Well, I think, I think we're lucky that there is a solution to the problem, first of all. But, uh, well, we have trouble getting this product.
They checked on the grout, and it is available.
I think it's, I think it's over a week, week and a half to get, I think it's out of Wyoming is where they actually have the supply right now.
So I guess, yeah, we tried to initially, even though they used betonite grout, if we were to use that for the entire project, they would've increased their material costs by seventy thousand dollars, say, to do the entire well field. And that, that number would've gone up because it costs, instead of ten bucks a bag, it costs thirty to forty dollars a bag. So again, yeah, there's, there's a situation where we wanna have competitive bidding, or it's gonna help drive down the cost as part of the upfront. Here, um, the contractor is recognizing the fact that they have not been able to be successful. They, I think they take some of that responsibility with all of the work that they've spent, trying to figure out a different way to get this to work with all the different experiences that they have. They've also, like I said, they are willing to keep track of the number of bags they're using, and they, they've estimated what it would cost upfront to do a, a perfect bore every time. But they know as those holes shrink, they're gonna use less material. So the intent is to actually, credit to the school back. After we get this project completed, if they use only sixty to seventy percent of those bags, that other thirty percent, you won't own that. They'll take that back and they'll give a credit. So again, they're trying to be as competitive as possible, I think, in being upfront with what it costs per bag and, um, trying to be as productive as possible, well, now that they've got this system figured out.
I appreciate that, that they've put the time in and trying to now find a solution. I do have a concern, though, that, um, as they were going to bid to you guys or to whomever for the contract, maybe they should've checked the soil types that are present here.
Right.
Getting ready to bore, and I think that would fall on, you know, that's not in our lap, because that is what it is, and they can get that. So I don't think we should have to have any extra cost for that. My concern is if they've got a percent that they can, I understand that we should pay for the materials as well.
Sure.
But I have a concern about the percent of the overhead profit, if they're going to add on to that, uh, extra dollars to cover up the fact that they have had to have more expense on this. And that part, I have a very hard time swallowing.
Well, I agree. We've had quite a few discussions with the contractor, on what we consider productivity on the front end of this project versus what they're gonna be able to increase productivity on the other end of the project, the tail end. So they, they've obviously struggled on the front end of the project. Almost always, that's what you do, right? Once you get into a system, you get into a rhythm, you speed up, and then toward the end of the project, they're able to finish up and get done. It is what I would consider a, a large change order, and I think they should be taking into consideration some of the markup percentages that they normally do on small projects, because this project is just gonna be one, one lump sum. We need to look at that, that markup. I think that, that needs to be adjusted.
Yeah.
Again, that, that is our request that we've already made to the contractor. To finalize this change order, we need to get at least some direction from the board, but, um, we're looking to try to get the contractor to provide us a fair and reasonable cost for the materials and get the project done as quickly as possible. That saves them time. They move on to the next job. That's what we want them to do, and that's what they wanna do.
We've already had one overrun, or because of pipes or because of something that wasn't removed, all removed before, didn't we get an overrun on something on this?
We had a thirty-three thousand dollar positive change order. Right. We, we were able to successfully get credits back for thirty-three thousand dollars. What that included was, um, the water line was originally to be replaced from the street end. We, we didn't do that because we don't have a sprinkler system installed. The city was able, and the school was able to come and say, the, the water main is fine, let's not do that. So that was credited back right up front. The second thing we did was some conduits. We were able to increase the number of wires per conduit. It has to do with electrical code and a lot of things, but in the end, we were able to then get a cost reduction because the electrical contractor gave us back money for less conduit needing to be installed. Currently, that is the only change orders that we have on this contract.
Well, I guess, I'm, I thought we approved one here.
That was outside the coverage. That was for water pipes.
Yeah. That was, that was for something they found out when we got in there to redo that water line that we, went even in the project to start with.
Well, yeah.
Well.
It's still part of our, it's still gonna be part of our cost. I don't care.
Well, it's part of our cost, but it really, it's not associated with this particular...
That's something, it was, it was our advantage to do when we had somebody on site that could do it, and we had things stored up as opposed to...
And I guess, the only, it was, it was considered an unknown condition because we had asbestos materials. We were not able to remove all the ceilings prior to, um, so you're always gonna find little surprises above ceilings, no matter what we do. And so that, I mean, that defines kind of what we got into.
How many more of these have we got going in there?
I mean, obviously, the first floor is completely done. They've, they've identified some areas where they'd like to have some aesthetic improvements for the ceiling. We've been reviewing those as we go along for classroom.
Well, I guess my thing is if, I mean, if we've got this additional cost of forty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-six, and you're talking to them to try and hold their margin down on it for that, I guess I'm feeling that Shire is responsible somewhat with us on this, because they would want to have, I think, had the test wells and stuff done and told us everything was go. And I think maybe the, between the two of us, we can work out a cost. I think they should give a little bit too.
Well, like I said, we, we considered unknown conditions, but, um, I can understand what your concerns are. And it, it was not included in the project original, in the original bid. They obviously bid it based upon the original specifications. If we'd used graphite grout from the beginning, the, that additional cost for materials would've been reflected in the bid.
Plus, they wouldn't have had near the trouble, they wouldn't have had near the trouble they're having. They'd have been a lot farther along than they were right now.
Right. I mean, our goal is to try to get them done before school starts as much as possible, get them out so we can get the system running. What I'm concerned about, obviously, at any point in time, is that when you get outside of a competitive bidding environment, you have to scrutinize the cost of materials and labor and make sure that they're, they're being fair and equitable and all of this. And that's currently what we spent the last three or four days discussing and verifying all of that.
Shouldn't the test bores be done? You understood your explanation before as to why they were doing it. Shouldn't they really be done the way that we were gonna have them do it? So they should've been working with a product that they would be using throughout the process to make sure that it would actually work?
I would think so.
Yes, I, I, I think that what we expected them to do was to use a standard grout system.
Because they didn't...
And when they did, they were in and out fairly quickly because it was their advantage, obviously, to get it done quickly. And they used an equivalent material.
Isn't that kind of their fault then, that they chose to use something that wasn't necessarily what we were gonna be...
Well, I think, I think you said we expected it to check, but it wasn't specified, is that...
Right. What we specified was a very specific test. What we outlined in that was to do the bore, insert graphite, or excuse me, uh, the general grout, not the graphite grout. And then that particular grout had a thermal performance requirement. They then sit down and, or start doing a test. They actually inject heat into the ground. And that, that test, the goal of that test primarily is to get what we want is a specific thermal conductivity number. And that number then is used to decide how many bores we need, how, how long they need to be. We're not guessing, I guess, on the number of bores based on the last project. We try to be a little bit more concise about that because of the cost of, of doing anything like this. That was the primary goal of this, of this test. Not, not necessarily to test the, the ability of a certain type of grout to work. The contractor did not change, I think, the type of grout because they were seeing it as a problem with the original grout. The reason that they did it was because they were wanting to do it as quick as possible. So again, they see the graphite-type grout, that costs them an extra six hundred dollars on them for one bore, that saves them a thousand dollars worth of labor because they don't have to recruit back the second day. They'll go ahead and opt to do that.
Right, which I understand, but since they weren't going to be using that grout, that, I mean, I'm sure that was not specified for what we were going to be doing.
Right.
It would seem to me that they should be doing their tests with the grout that we were gonna be using, or that we should've specified that that's what they would use it for. Or is this just like so far out of the norm that you guys will never have these situations where you have to go to the metanized grout, or you have to make these changes?
Right. Typically, on, on test bores, a single test bore, it's not unusual for them to use an equivalent grout. Because in their mind, it's about product, productivity, and then getting that thermal test done.
There's where they made, there's where they made them, but, I mean, if they'd have used the regular, if they'd have used the standard and had the trouble, they would've known that they wouldn't have ever, they wouldn't have ever let it go that way in the bidding.
So you're aware, this is a different contractor that did the test well. So, again, we got the test. The test has only limited information as far as the conditions which they were working under. They, they might've been in there, obviously, on the thermal performance and all of that.
I mean, I, I understand all that, but I, I mean, in the same, in the same reason, I'm thinking that's why we hired an architect, was to make sure that stuff like this minimizes and stuff. And I think that if, if we'd have done, I mean, if you was doing the test and stuff, I think we should've tested it the way we was doing it, and we didn't know. And I mean, I just, I don't feel that it's totally one-hundred percent our, our fault.
Well, now that, I thought the same contractor done, that got the bid, done the test.
No, no.
Now we even put him at a disadvantage. He was even at a disadvantage because he didn't know, he didn't know what they did.
He had the, the report was done prior to, and the report was available.
Yeah.
If you look at, if you were to look at the report, I would be very honest with them, that they wouldn't necessarily be able to deduce, okay, this is what they did, so this is gonna be a problem.
But that was in their report that they used the grout?
Correct.
But at the same token, you guys, as the architect, you wrote up the specifications that we were gonna use, correct? Okay.
Based upon every other project that we've ever done.
Okay.
We use the, the latest and greatest cost-effective grout that we could use. And, and that's the, the conundrum that we have here is that we base our specs upon performance from the past to make sure that it, that it performs well. It's that historical performance that makes us successful at getting these projects done. When we run into unknown conditions, whether that be an unusual amount of clay, or, you know, we've actually had situations where we did have to make adjustments due to, there was rocks, large boulders, you know, that are in the soil. You can't tell if you could do one punch of a, of a test bore and twenty feet over, it's totally different. So we're struggling with one bore to be able to come up with...
But it sounds to me like we're running into this in basically every bore, so it's something that we should've, should've been detected, I would say.
And you said the blue clay was everywhere, and that's still available in the public on the soil testing. So if you had gone, yes, you should do that, yes, you should do this. It's worked at all your other places, but we're here. So I would think another check would be that you would check the soil testing of the site you're going to.
Sure.
And ask them as well.
Right. Again, we've discussed with the contractor on what type of things they've done.
That's not our complaint, because the soil is here.
Yeah. Well, we certainly tried to do our homework. And based upon other soil conditions, we had at other job sites, we tried to find that right mixture and utilize, if we do have special condition, obviously, there's other additives that are as expensive. We try to add those in and utilize those. All of that's been done over the last two or three weeks to make sure that if there was a better solution, we'll go at it, and we'll try to use that. In the end, like I say, it's, it has not been successful, and we've been damaging too many tubes and taking way too long the production.
I, I mean, with your explanation, it's definitely no doubt, I'm buying this as something that we're, we're gonna have to do. I'm just, I'm just trying to put in my mind really, who's gonna foot the bill on it? Who's fully, who's fully responsible for this?
Well, and I think, and that, that process has been begun between the architect and contractor. I know they've kind of been beating up that issue a little bit.
Sure.
And I know, uh, we, we wanted to get Chuck in front of the full board.
Right.
We've got all these, these small pieces of conversations, you know, and it's, it's time now that there is, there seems to be a clear direction. This is what we need to do.
Right. Now that we know.
You know what I think? I think, uh, you're, you're pretty clear on the board's concerns or...
Yep.
Or where they're at.
And we're not done. Like I said, we've had quite a bit of...
And we don't have a change order in front of us tonight either. So in terms of, uh, raising the knowledge level of the board.
Right.
Public comment of forty-five minutes or so, we might, we might be about at the end of the good we can get out of tonight.
Okay.
I think you're right.
Yes, yes.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Give that.
One question.
Yep.
Yes. There's twenty bores were done, and now all of a sudden, we're having a problem with the next twenty-eight. Is that correct? So what's the difference between now versus the first twenty that was never a problem?
The twenty was a problem.
During that first twenty, they had ten, ten broken pipes.
Ten broken, right.
That's the reason they changed things for the next twenty-eight.
Okay.
There was a problem with first one, okay.
They, they, they can say, basically, attempted several times to, to either say, is this just a localized issue? You know, will we get out of it? As they continued on. We tried different additives to, to help solidify the wall. All of those type of things were attempted in those first twenty. Out of the thirty that they did, twenty were successful and tested out pressure-wise, so they're, we know they're, they're okay. But if they continue that route, they're gonna end up breaking additional pipes, and they're gonna be here forever. And they're, you know, obviously, it's not right for them to have to do that. So we've, we've switched our game plan a little bit, tried a different grout, different methodology. And it seems to be successful. We know that. That's, that's what's been, uh, shown over the last week. They've gotten fifteen bores put in successfully.
But, but they're not transferring. Yeah, we can't keep, we can't keep doing it that way.
Right. We cannot do that.
It's gotta be changed, yeah.
You've gotta have something with a better thermal performance in order to keep the well field meeting the criteria. Okay. You've gotta have something with a better thermal performance in order to keep the well field meeting the criteria. Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just offer another quick couple of comments. I've talked, Sam's Well Drilling is the contractor actually doing the, the boring. They're a subcontractor of Brockway Mechanical. He's a subcontractor of us Woodruff Construction. I've talked to Brockway the other day. I think, I know for a Woodruff standpoint, I mean, we'd be willing to not do any markup on this. And I think Brockway might be the same way, at least from what I've talked to them today, as far as helping this, helping this through. And then as far as fresh concrete addery, I think another way to think about the test boring is, like Chuck said, 99% of the time, this method and the grout mixture that we would use works and you have some troubles, but you get through it.
Right.
And so you're looking at it, if he had come to you at the beginning and said, okay, the test board costs $10,000 and this just measures the conductivity, now we could, you could spend $30,000 and, and check all the boring methods. 99% of the time, it, it's not gonna matter. He'd probably say, well, no, we don't wanna do 30,000. Let's just do the 10,000 at 99% of the time it works. So kinda compare to what would have been back then. Easy that way too.
I just, you know, the guys were gonna do the bore. I mean, if the, if the requirements were this, do the bore with this. Not, don't add graphite to it just to make it faster. That's my, you know, if this is what we're asking for, this is what should have been the, you know. I think that somebody dropped the ball in there somewhere.
But it may have cost that fine.
Well, yeah, it may have.
It would have cost more. Typically, you just, you're just measuring for conductivity. You're not necessarily measuring for the ease of boring.
I just, I, I wanna mention, obviously, this is an important part of the project that, you know, it's not gonna work right if we don't have the well field right. But I just wanna mention too, our, our overall satisfaction with the work that's getting done in the building is, is very good.
That looks good.
We're hoping we can get through this, you know, as, as economically as possible and end up in great projects. So we, we appreciate the communication.
What, what was this about the ceiling? You got a problem somewhere along the line?
There's a few existing pipes that are gonna potentially be below ceiling. We wanna try to conceal those, but some shields. And so we've got, you know, 150, $2, $200 worth of cost in a few areas that we wanna try to address those. We haven't fully developed those yet, so.
Yeah. We're kinda, yeah. There are some things that we might credit. There are some things that might add.
Right.
I mean, there're gonna be some things, just like, you know, a $5 million project to always have that stuff. So just so you're not, don't think that there's nothing else. Not that we're seeking anything else or we just wanna find the most economical solutions and.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. We don't wanna put the, we don't wanna just automatically say, yeah, go ahead and do the 45, add the 45 to the bill. We wanna see how it comes out at the end.
And the good point at this point, where we are in construction, we're over that hump. Abatement's done. All the demo work's done. All the ceilings have been opened up, so we know exactly what there is to work with. So we're, we have the solutions on how to solve those existing conditions. We're working through on how those credits and adds can work towards the middle. And so we're on the downhill slope of that, but that's still where we are right now.
I don't, I don't, you don't give, you don't give an open jacket.
We have.
I don't even sit in my wife with the camera. Oh, heck, I don't.
Thank you very much, boy. I appreciate it.
I know, she'll hear this. Oh, my goodness.
Next on the agenda is administrative reports. You missed us out.
Just like a good project, we'll try to make up time here. I'll try to go down. With super tense, we.
This'll be.
And I'm assuming that you all took interest in the information I presented here. I can read it, so I don't have to go through it with you. Uh, the gifted draft, uh, that's for your review. I'll be happy to take more feedback, feedback on that. That's my, my personal visual professional development plan. And I wrote it kind of in response to, to some of the evaluation points in June. So like any plan, you know, I can't get too many goals or I'll lose focus. But try to target a few goals on, on things that are important and on concerns that were expressed. So if you haven't had time to look at that, please, please do take time, maybe a work session or sometime then I can finalize that. Or maybe when we do, uh, board goals and I can kinda sync my, my personal goals with those. Uh, that worked very well this past year. Uh, my personal goals aligned very well with board goals. And I think we've quite a bit of success with both of them. So that's in there for your information. The ISB Legislative Action Priorities and Resolutions will be handled under the President's Report. Uh, we kind of previewed that last month. Uh, we know we need to get those into ISB. Uh, included, uh, kind of in chart form for you what some of those goals are. So Jennifer will handle that later on. Uh, the My College Options, that's just a brief report I get as a district overview of our students' future plans based on their work with that, uh, My College Options website. So there are some numbers there you can look at where our students' interests lie, what they intend to do. Uh, I also put in there for you an article on professional development. And, uh, this is something the, the board's been rightly concerned about and asked about. And that article actually focuses on Albuquerque schools, which are plenty different than ours, but the, uh, the simple issue is the same. And there's a lot in there, um, from, from our stand, administrative standpoint, improved use of data and trying to get teacher practices to change and the role of professional development, what professional development should be like, which I think we're doing very well locally. And then from the board perspective, how can we get our hands on some data and know that's making a difference? And that's, that's a real simplification of what's in that article. But if you haven't had a chance to read it, please do. Uh, there's some good thoughts there.
I think we have had some examples of how professional development has worked with Mr. Welsh came in.
That's a good example.
Our AIW team that came in and showed what they're doing.
Right. And we try to provide that. It's, it's just really tough to, to quantify or to show a very clear cause and effect all the time. And, uh, and we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep working on that. We wanna put data in front of the board. But I appreciate you mentioning that. Uh, there's a brochure that was sitting out at, at your seat to show you, uh, Peripherian Career Academy brochure, a little informational brochure. The land parcel information I included there as well. I don't know if we're in the market. I don't know that there'd be a great use for that to the district or that we have, uh, you know, money to, to put a bid on that. But I put that in for your information. Uh, it's not out here as an action item.
Explain again where this is.
Well, I was having, I was envisioning it over by the salvage yard. I guess it is sort of, but not that far east. Uh, it's the old DOT site. Is that what you were saying, Rich?
That's what.
Where that?
Looks like to me.
Okay. And that's where that free mulch area is, I think, in the right place? No?
No.
Oh, is it farther east?
The free mulch is right behind the high.
Straight east, straight east to Roosevelt Center.
Oh, east of Roosevelt.
If you, if you go.
Across the street.
It's a nice, it's a nice street to go south of, along Roosevelt. It's on the east side of Nice Street.
So it's not really a very large area either then.
It's not very.
Not really.
That's where they were at before they went out on the.
Yeah, right. They went, we knew you drive the license and everything. Then they made it shit, it's over behind.
That's a pretty good sized parcel though.
That's kind of their regular shape.
Yes, it is.
Isn't it, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's something, I don't know, if you wanna have more discussion now, uh, we can. I just, I didn't wanna just throw the letter away. I won't get aware of it, so. I mean, can you foresee a future use for that land from the district? And do you want to try to, you know, it also, I'm also thinking, you know, we've, we've worked extremely hard to cut the budget. And then, you know, when I see fair market value is 122,000 or whatever it says, um, you know, I don't know if we have that to spend just to have another.
I don't know if other cases, if the location is advantageous to us or anything. Forsee, I mean, right now we don't foresee anything that we would really have a plan to be useful in that area.
We've got to clean it up and I'm sure being a mechanical site, there's be a lot of cleaning up. Greaseless in the ground or?
No, we've got that over in Washington.
You start taking poor samples of the ground.
Okay. Uh, construction manager update number seven. I do wanna give you a verbal update here. And then at the end of the meeting, we can talk about, uh, my suggestion would be a, a special meeting, a sort of a work session and maybe prior to our August 20 and 4 meeting, if we find a date. Because Tim Seibert, uh, he's, he's the president of Carly Nelson and you haven't met yet. But we've had, uh, since, since you approved Carly Nelson, we've had at least a half dozen conversations, meetings. Fred, Kim, Aaron Beckner and I went over to Burlington to Carly Nelson. Uh, was our initial meeting. We were there two hours. Uh, it was very worthwhile. Uh, we spent time going through, uh, contracts for construction managers and architects. We looked at potential architects that we could, uh, have sent a request for proposal to. We looked at timelines, uh, talked, talked about a lot of the basics. And then as a follow-up to that, uh, Fred and I met and, and went through the contracts and identified potential concerns we had. Uh, part of that was based on, uh, a meeting that Kim and Fred had gone to hosted by Jester Insurance, where there were some things in architect, uh, contracts that the insurance people said, look out for this. Uh, so we, Fred and I went through that and then, uh, I had emailed Tim some concerns and, uh, he called back. We had, uh, you and I had about a 45 minute conversation. And Fred, Kim and I met after that to go through his answers to our concerns. And then Fred and I followed up with a conference call today with, uh, Tim and Jake. And, uh, so, so things are moving. We'll have, uh, we'll have a draft, uh, should have final draft of contract that we can approve at that special meeting. Uh, one part of that is, um, you'll remember that night that their range was 3 to 3.5%. They are making it 3%. Uh, so that'll be a part of the contract. The architect selection, the request for proposal there, we have identified, uh, we've kind of narrowed a, a list of a dozen or so to six or seven. Uh, it'll be, it'll be, uh, seven if, um, there's a local engineering firm in Burlington. Uh, one possible scenario is going with an engineering firm as the primary and architect as the secondary, which is a little bit reversed from how it usually is, but so much of the proposal, the high school is, uh, mechanical, you know, age back that it might make sense to do that. So we've talked about that. So we, we identified today, people would be, you know, we'd like to request proposal to go to. He's also doing a draft of that, uh, actually, uh, has done a draft. I think I got an email, but I haven't read it yet. Have you seen that?
I think you got, that might have been the response to Chester Insurance.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Those points.
Yeah. Uh, so he's working on a draft of that. That, that part will be done within the next couple of weeks and sent out to architects. And then, uh, the plan is, is for us to try to narrow that then down to kind of a final three to have come to the board and then the board make the selection. So lots, lots of things are happening with that. I'm very satisfied with, uh, the attention we're getting from them, the professionalism. And, uh, I think you'll enjoy meeting Mr. Seibert and going through some of those things.
Do we have a cost or a set cost that it won't go above and beyond before we get, until we get to the bond vote?
Uh, we have reimbursables. I don't think we have a, a flat set amount.
I think they would give us something, but I don't know that it goes out already. Right.
Okay.
Well, I think we, I mean, we wanna address them all and we don't wanna go above.
No, that was not.
No.
Right. Why not? We said, we talked 10 to 12. They would not go above 12.
No, 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 no.
We're talking about the cost.
The whole project cost, oh, well, that, no, that, that part don't buy.
That is so bad.
Part I'm wondering about is what they're gonna do. The total project cost is what I wanna see.
No, they're, they're, uh, we talked about that. That was part of our initial meeting with them too. And they're, they're very intent on sticking to, to the budget.
Yeah, that's the part of the, yeah.
Uh, let me, that's something before we get, uh, before we meet with them again or get a contract, I'll remind them of that. We talked about that, having a, uh, flat.
The story date is a number and then their, in Nelson's proposal, it said they would give us a number, but they didn't give us a number yet because they didn't know what exactly that front was gonna cost or been in.
They did say that they would give us to give to you on that.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Let me, let me, I'll run that back by you. Uh, only other things that aren't on my list are recommendation type things or one I included under old business. I mentioned last month, you'd have the vertical team, uh, feedback and that's, and that's, that's in there at page 119. And then if you've had a chance to look through everything, uh, you see a recommendation on counselor's contracts on page 147. And this is something that, uh, there's been lots of conversation, uh, about this idea with, uh, Mr. Welch and with Mrs. Atwood. And, uh, you see detailed on, on that, uh, those potential savings in the district of $75,000 next year if we try to provide coverage for Pence with our middle school counseling staff. Uh, I wouldn't suggest it if, if we haven't been in constant cutting mode and if our staffing levels weren't such that I think it's possible. If, if that's the route you wanna go, then I'm suggesting we, we do that on a trial basis. Uh, part of that also is, is getting into lateness for candidates, even though now I know, you know, I, obviously I've delayed a couple of weeks with this as being the plan. So that's something to be to roll over. Uh, that's on page 147. You know, I will say that the willingness on part of, uh, Mr. Welch to give it a try has been awesome. You know, he, he charted what he really had to have and we've talked about how we can make that happen for him. So it's gonna require a quite a bit of flexibility and willingness on the part of that staff to help provide coverage. But, uh, you know, that's, that's the recommendation to try it for a year. But if, if, uh, that's my nod to what our budget, budget situation has been. And, um, as other things have come up, you know, too, when we have a chance to save through attrition, you know, I've, I've put it out there because nobody likes cutting people. And that's, that's why I suggested in the first place. But if board decides, you wanna do it, we're, we're okay where we're at budget-wise. That's, you know, I'm not gonna cry over that. We'll try to find somebody at this date. So anyway, that's page 147. That's it for me unless you have questions.
Very enough.
Okay. First item, bread and milk quotes. We have those. They have been submitted. There will be action items on those two items later in the meeting. For those quotes. We've been advertising for personnel. We have had requests from two individuals for transfers. So we'll have an action item later in the meeting for recommending the transfer of individuals in the food service area. We've also had a retirement, so there'll be an action item to accept the retirement request from Merle Farrell, FMS, Lee Bastogio. So we'll see that a little bit later. Kim and I've been working also on the classified employee handbook. That will be presented later for, for approval. Updates, we're still working on projects. It's obviously a very busy summer, but the press box at the baseball field is about 80% complete. We still have stairs to go up to the upper level. Uh, we've poured some concrete around it. We're also working on the design for the dugouts at this point and the budget for those. We bring that to the board before we do anything, but that's probably gonna be a little bit later, uh, probably September so that we can have that as a late fall project. Stadium restroom is coming along nicely. It is, the, the building is up. It is done. Now we're on the process of doing some framing on the lower level as well as starting the plumbing for the, for the restroom. So we'll have that up and running by the first football game. Finishing tennis courts, that's taking place right now. The contractor's onsite to do the resurfacing for that. And remember, that's a joint project in, uh, the district and the city. So that will be split, cost for that. Uh, the only other thing that I have is we have received, uh, our two new school buses, so they're onsite and we're ready to go for this fall.
Are you coming up Lincoln?
Lincoln is, um, we have some technology going in. When did? Oscar?
Next week.
Next week, sorry. Uh, so that will be the last phase and then, uh, it's just a matter of moving the opportunity center on. We have, uh, contacted Indian Hills and, uh, Young House will both entities that they can have access to their rooms. So that's, that's, it's ready.
You said there's two new buses. Have we decided to auction the other two off?
Yes. Uh, there'll be auction department, auction service. The date is possibly the last weekend of this month. That has not been. The date is possibly the last weekend of this month. That has not been set in stone yet. But yes, they will be auctioned off, I guess.
So just the two buses or we have other equipment?
We had other surplus materials that we took out there. So there will be a listing coming out.
Where are we with cleaning out the storage places or wherever? We had a whole bunch of old furniture. Is that included in this?
Yes, that was, a lot of that was taken to Martin's. And then Mr. Sadoff, Kim and myself went out and we looked through it one final time. But it is at Martin's, yes. One last update. I have had conversations with Charles Forteys regarding those rooftop units. Emails back and forth, kind of, we really haven't gotten very far. But I guess I would suggest that that possibly become a part of the high school project. I mean, Nelson kind of had that in their proposal the night that they gave that presentation. So I guess I would like to possibly recommend that we just kind of phase that in or work it in to see if it is feasible. You know, I don't know that they are, but that might be part of their project.
I guess that was my que, that was my question. Is it feasible and will they do what we want them to do?
I guess I would, I would suggest that we just kind of leave that to.
Nelson will let them check it.
If that's all right. This whole item.
Any other questions? And now, you have another question.
I'm sure this is why Jerry posted what she did on Facebook. I can say that there are curriculum directors all over the state of Iowa who haven't been looking forward to having this conversation with their boards about the Iowa assessment. So I do have some information for you on that. I'm a little, I just got back from vacation, so I'm a little confused for a variety of reasons. Did everyone get one of these packets? So I have some extra.
I did.
I did.
Oh, wait, get the, we can get that now.
We got any one too, Marcy?
You want?
Sure.
Before, before we get into the Iowa assessments, and Diane, if you want to talk about this. Back table, something. You want to know? I did just want to give you a quick update as to, you know, what goes on in, in the ACT building in the summertime. A lot of people think that it gets really quiet out here and things slow way down and that actually isn't the case. Since we've, since we've been out, we've actually made some pretty big accomplishments in terms of curriculum development, coursework and integration of the Common Core in the areas of language arts. So I just want to rattle off a quick list because these are the accomplishments that we have, you know, under our belts to date. And I'll bring these, you know, it's the curriculum, but it's a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. If you've been on the board for a number of years, you're used to seeing benchmarks come in. And we're really kind of changing the way that looks because it's, a curriculum is a lot more than just a set of grade-level benchmarks. So we've established and integrated a K4 technology curriculum. And again, everything that I'm telling you right now is part of the 21st century integration for the Iowa Core. We have begun work on a life essentials course. It basically has three different phases. It will go from eight to nine to 12. And this is a course that, the name's still up in the air. If you ask Matt Jones, you're going to hear called one thing and it's called something different at the high school. But the purpose of this class, again, is to make certain that we're integrating 21st century concepts and skills at age-appropriate levels so that we're not expecting our ninth graders to master things that they're supposed to have mastered by the time they leave high school. And same thing with eighth graders. You know, we're trying to make this a gradual build so that we're increasing the, the level of knowledge and skill that our students have in a, in a fluid way. And so that coursework has involved the career tech department at high school and it's involved a conglomeration of teachers at the middle school. And that's something that we started working on pretty early. And again, one of the reasons that that conversation came about was the fact that we want to do a better job of preparing our eighth graders for ninth grade and making sure that we're, we're preparing them for success and hopefully positively impacting, you know, a good number of at-risk students we have and ultimately the number of dropouts that we have at high school level. We have also reconstructed English eight. I know there's been a little bit of concern that we were getting a little too far away from the middle school concept. And one of the statements that I've made to the board in the past and I'll make again is that, you know, we had a language arts and a reading period in eighth grade for years and years and years and we've been on sign-in now for three years. So insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. So there was an opportu, opportunity at Superintendent Stett's. Sadoff indicated through attrition with the retirement of Mrs. Bailey to do some revamping of a pre-existing course, taking language arts and reading into what's, what we're calling an English eight course that more fluidly flows into English nine. Basically, the reading and the writing is going to be integrated into one course instead of having a writer's workshop situation where the kids are primarily focusing on the writing of fiction, which really isn't positively impacting their ability to write to learn or to write to convey what they know. So that's, there's a report on page 109. Kathy Paska actually wrote that up in terms of the work that we completed. So we did that pretty early in June. We're actually in May, for gracious, nice lights. And that's something that Kathy and I have continued to work on throughout the summer. So I wanted to make sure that you had that. In addition to the English eight, we've also completely integrated the Common Core in the, at the six through nine levels, or I'm sorry, six through 12 levels. So these are things that will be coming to you in August. So aside from that, if you flip to page 110, I wanted to give the board an idea of what the standards-based coursework, the standards-based reporting, professional learning work will look like. And believe it or not, Art and I actually hadn't, we hadn't talked about the article that you put in the board report, but page 110 goes along with it very nicely. First of all, you know, I have an opportunity to go to the Iowa Reading Conference this year with elementary teachers from all over the state. And I'll say it again, I will, I will take our teachers over any others in the state based on the individuals, you know, that I went to the conference with and their level of knowledge and understanding of early literacy. I was just proud to be, proud to be a Fairfield teacher as usual. On 110, you know, we are K4 now completely, completely standards-based in terms of how we're reporting out, how we're assessing and instructing. So the work for K4 this year, if you look down where it says work to be completed, this is where we really get into what's called Phase Six. And these phases have been going on for a number of years. But Phase Six really has to do with refinement and, and purposefulness and specificity. And it has to do with our level of interpretation of the intent of the benchmarks and making certain that we are constructing assessments and instruction and activities that actually generate the evidence of learning at the appropriate level. And so what our students need is for us to continue to improve our comprehension as professionals of these Common Core benchmarks. And as our professional expertise increases in those benchmarks, I do foresee more than just a general correlation between, between test scores and, and the work that we're doing with professional development. Because right now, at the elementary level, our work for our students is our professional learning because we're increasing our, our skill at constructing instructionally sensitive assessments to a high, a high degree or a high level of specificity. So the, the phases on there, if it's Phase Six and it's A through E, really talks about the things that we'll be using professional development time for K4 this year. So it actually jives almost perfectly with your article.
And at the state level too, just, just to add that, there's conversation now about high schools. Sometimes high schools are the, the last change, but part of the work of the legislature is to establish a study group of competency-based learning at the high school level. You get away from this idea of just seat time and put your time in, Carnegie units. But to look more at the high school level, also what Marcy's talking about, what is the, what is the evidence that they learn, what they need to learn, instead of just putting their time in, getting a passing grade. So you're gonna see this work move on up through middle school, high school too.
And, and that's my, that's my hope for our district as well, that we find a way to have it evolve as it's suitable for the higher grade levels. It might not have to look exactly the same. One could say that, that I'm obsessed with Iowa Core and be spot-on. And the reason that I, I am obsessed with it is because I think it's one of the best things to happen in Iowa education in the last 25 years. You know, it started, 25 years ago, it started, you know, as a, as a reform effort. You know, we start, everything really in Iowa has started as an attempt to reform secondary education in the state of Iowa. And Model Core came about after kind of a meta-analysis of the last 25 years of failed reform efforts in the state of Iowa. So when I, when I talk about the Iowa Core, keep in mind that I am talking about the integrated national curriculum in math and reading right now and, and, you know, and language arts. But as, as we integrate that, we have to keep in mind that these Iowa assessments that I'm going to be reporting on in a few minutes are actually directly aligned to the Common Core. And it's the first time in our state's history that our tests have actually aligned with the written curriculum in districts. We've had some general, general similarities, but they were not, they were not broadly communicated or widely known. I would say that if you get 20 curriculum directors in a room, they could talk about the old standards in the content areas, but most other people might have, you know, they've heard about them, but nobody was really using them. So when we get to a point in Fairfield Community School District where our written curriculum, our measured curriculum, which are, that's our assessments, our enacted curriculum and even our hidden curriculum, when those all align, then, then it will be even easier to prove a correlation and even a causation between professional learning and student achievement. So I bring up all of these, these changes and developments before I go into the assessment report because we are moving in the right direction in terms of the changes that we have to make. Nothing happens as quickly as I would like it to. But I've learned a lot in the last five years. So what's most important is the level of knowledge that our teachers have gained through this process and it is being delivered more consistently to our students. And I, I have, I have proof of that through walkthroughs. I have proof of that through teacher-constructed assessments and I have proof of that through consistent VRI data. And you'll see some of that when I bring the annual projects report information in August as well. So questions about the standards-based reporting work that's going to occur this year? Questions about anything that Kathy reported on on page 109 or some of the coursework that she shared with you? All right.
I, I have one, one question. I am, I ask it because the board's kind of asked me this too. So as you look at the Space Six refinement specificity, this is the standards-based reporting work you're talking about?
Correct.
And that, a lot of that is gonna happen in the course of our regular.
Our Wednesdays.
Professional development, our Wednesdays. Because one thing everybody's noticed is just the, the number of days that we've had teachers out of the classroom this past year. We had several new initiatives going, all kinds of learning. And, and I saw a lot of it out here and there was great work going on. But there's a tipping point and there's somewhere where, where they're out too much. So I just want to clarify that a lot of this standards-based reporting work will happen on our, our late start.
These, this is the basis of our agendas for our Wednesday mornings. This is our primary focus for the K4 professional in the fourth year. And so this in addition to our full day in November and our full day in April. And one thing that, I'm just K4? This is for K4. Well, fifth grade as well. We're, fifth grade will be rolling out this year. So this is their first year. They're not to this point. They're still in phase two and three. So we don't want to jump the gun on them. They would, there'd be huge gasps of air if they thought this is what we were working on next year. They'll be going through, grade five will be going through preliminary assessment construction and making sure that they have their, they're actually enacting the sequence work that they aligned from this spring.
So we're six through 12 on their.
Well, AIW is gonna be a large professional development focus.
One of the things we have to wait for, Jennifer, is making sure that we have our signup plan. I mean, we need to have identification. I was bugging Art today about, did you get any letter from the state? Once I get that letter, that really kicks the ball into motion and that's when, you know, it's time to update our signup plans, write one if we need to for Pence. My assumption is, based on the display that I pulled up today, was that I'm probably going to have to assist Kristen writing a signup plan for Pence, but it's only for one sub-group area. But I could be wrong. So I really have to wait for that blasted letter to come. I can say, I can say with little hesitation or fear that we'll be on signup list for reading and mathematics again. And once I share some of this information with you, you'll see why.
Okay. We're making these changes, but who's gonna come back and tell us? Who's gonna, other than us evaluating ourselves, who's gonna tell us we're on the right track?
Well, I think eventually we'll start seeing it if the state of Iowa sticks with the summative assessment for more than one year. We have revised Iowa assessments this year and like I said, Jerry, they're aligned with the Common Core.
Yeah, but if, if the state don't believe, I mean, if the people who've got to evaluate us don't believe it, they're gonna tell us, I mean, if, if they're not in line with us, why, then they could call it anything.
Well, like I said, you know, Art started his report with talking about, you know, what is the degree of correlation or causation between professional learning and student achievement? And we're, for the first time in the state of Iowa history, we actually have summative statewide assessments that align with the curriculum that we're supposed to be enacting in districts. The issue is, I, I do think the data will, will show it. But what we have to remember is this is the first year we've had Common Core integrated K4. And this is the first year we've had a summative statewide assessment that's actually aligned to those same grade-level expectations. So I do expect very quickly that our data is going to show that we're on the right track. In terms of the coursework, the expectation, and it's ambiguous and there's not a lot of teeth in it right now, is that we're supposed to have a plan implemented so that we're reporting out on all facets of the Iowa Core by July 2012, which is this month. The initial understanding was we have to have all of our data at high school level put together. We're in the process of having that implemented and that's July 2012. We have a plan in place. We know what the implementation schedule is for that. So ironically, even though the deadline's sooner for secondary, we're going to have, we're going to have statistical evidence K5 before we will 612, just because of the way we've approached it in the district.
But the way Kurt Hansen talks about, you know, everything's gonna be so dang broad. It's not gonna mount to, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna make the final decision? That's what his, you know, he goes through a whole list of, of proposals.
If, if.
And if, and if, and if, and if. And so who's gonna, who's gonna make the final decision? That's, I, I, you know, they're so far off. The way he talks.
It might be a little bit of a mess up there right now.
Yeah, that's what he, that's the way he talks. It's just such a, and it could be, who knows what changes are coming, you know?
And my approach to that, just so my board knows, is that we will continue to proceed in a way that positively impacts learning for kids. We won't avoid hard work. We won't seek it out if we think it's going to be upheaved in the next month. You know, I'm holding right now on a couple of purchases, decisions on big screen assessment screeners that I need, I need to do. But I'm kind of waiting to see maybe if the state's going to actually pull the trigger and tell me so that we could perhaps get one for free. But bottom line is I have to have something ordered before the school year starts or we're going to be in the same boat, searching for data instead of analyzing it and doing the right thing for it. So my approach with what's going on at the Department of Education right now is to pay very close attention, know what's going on and make decisions that align with, with the evolution of our work so that we are moving forward, but we're not doing work that we're going to have to redo again in a year. I mean, I'm pretty sure teachers are stringing.
That's the worst part about changing administration. I mean, then you start bringing in different people or if you change administration, well, then you start bringing in different people with different ideas and whatever.
Here we are, oh. Why don't you give all of us a 10-year contract and we'll keep them all together?
Yeah.
Were you talking about here or?
No, I'm gonna talk state. Oh, I'm talking about state though. No, uh, we got, no, we got, we got a perfect system here.
Diane, good system. Did you get that?
Come on.
We now have careful, Diane. We now have careful, careful Diane. Uh, I, I wanna know Jerry's points we'll take. Though there, if you look at the legislative updates, there are at least three or four task force that the, the legislature has said to Department of Education, have us study this, this year. And then, uh, the DE's hope is that all of these things that they kind of threw out, there's ideas this year that got put on hold or got watered down, that the next legislative session, they'll come back and really hit it hard. So we have to, we have to watch very closely what's happening.
But I've been on two task force. I've been invited on a special education task force for the state and one for RTI, and they've both been so.
Yeah, well, there are, there are new task force coming for next year.
Nobody's invited. I'm not, apparently I'm not going to those parties.
Sorry, that's, Marcy talked a lot about alignment just within our district. But then, as she was saying too, we have to align with the expectations of the Department of Education, who's trying to work more closely with the legislature than ever in the past so we can get some big changes through. And, uh, you know, that's why, I mean, every month probably you're gonna see some legislative or Department of Ed update too. So we can kind of keep, try to keep up with what's going on.
So the line I try to walk is making sure we're moving our professional capacity forward. And it is, it is past time to start seeing that surface in student achievement data. Not just in the Iowa assessments, but in our universal screeners, in our diagnostic assessments. And so that's really, that's where we are as a district. And so my job is to push teachers, but not push them over a cliff where we're working too hard on something that's not going to exist in the next year.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's really the line I try to walk with that. Okay, so if you turn to page 111, this is the annual goal report that I provided for the vertical team. One of my responsibilities is to convene the district advisory and have them make recommendations on annual achievement goals. Before we dig into that, I want to just go through a few talking points. And if anybody's interested, it's basic, this is my crib sheet and I, I'd gladly print one off for you, but I figured you have enough paper in front of you. I've already talked about the first point, that the revised Iowa assessments are actually aligned with Common Core in reading and mathematics. And although that made for a much more difficult, much more rigorous test, I gladly embrace that because what we're putting in front of our teachers is what we're putting in front of our students for the statewide exam. And I think that's very important. Because it's a different test this year, the comparison of student achievement scores in terms of national percentile rank is really measuring apples against oranges because it's a different test. If you took a general math test and got an A and you took a calculus test and got a C, it's kind of hard to look at those numbers side by side and draw any sort of a conclusion on your achievement. Now, that's a pretty drastic, you know, that's a pretty drastic example, general math to calculus. But I, I can't stress enough that the Iowa assessments, the revised Iowa assessments are much more rigorous than the content of our previous Iowa test of basic skills in educational development. So that being said, not making excuses, the one thing that Iowa testing did account for was what we call national standard score. Now, what I don't think you got, do you have a sheet that looks like, basically like chiplets? You can pull that one out? Mark, could you bring a few more back here?
Yep.
One more? The, the metric that they did keep in place was the concept, this concept of national standard score. National standard score is a three-digit number that, that Iowa testing created so that they could measure student growth from year to year to year. So if you take your pointer finger on the left-hand side and see where it says grade level growth, see that? And it says three dash 17, four dash 15. That three means grade three and the expected points growth from the year before is 17. So the younger the child, the higher that number after the grade level. Four dash 15, grade four, expected 15 points growth. In our district, we have always far surpassed the expected grade level growth from year to year. So obviously, we don't have grade two on here because that's our first year and there's no, there's no way to record growth because it's our baseline here. So if you take, go over to the far right, for example, in table one, which is reading comprehension, go to 1011 and you'll see that where it says 22, that means on average in 1011, our third graders grew an average of 22 points from their second grade year to their third grade year. Now, this national standard score is really meant for, to measure Jennifer's growth and Art's and, you know, individual students from year to year. So we're averaging these to come up with this. If you look at 1112, we grew, but we, we did not grow overall as much as we were expected to. So if you look at grade three, expected growth, 17 points, on average, we grew 14. For fourth grade, expected growth between third and fourth grades, 15 points, we grew 8.3. We did have some slides. Fifth grade has been an interesting grade to follow since they began taking this test. They were rock stars in second grade, made all of our eyebrows raise, and they keep hitting these big dips. We have some pretty specific populations in this class, but we dipped. So we didn't grow as much as we were expected to as a grade level. The reason that it's color-coded, if you look diagonally, you see where 1011 is 22 and then you go to 1112 and it's 8.3. You can track, you can track a cohort or a group of kids from two to three, three to four, four to five. So you can even do that. If you go back to 2006, 2007, they're green. And you see where it says 23.7 and then 18.1, I'm going diagonally down to the right. That can show you. One of the things, you know, that I mention every year, you're probably tired of hearing it is, if we have a great year where we just blast out that number of expected points, more likely than not, the next year, we won't grow as much. That's what trends have shown us over time. So when we look at this national standard score chart for reading, mathematics, and science, a couple of things to remember, this is all students in our district. Students with IDPs, free and reduced lunch, everyone altogether. And it's an average of a national standard score. But it does show you that for the 1112 school year, our growth really wasn't consistently as high as it has been in the past. But if I, you know, I should have probably made a red jagged line between 1011 and 1112 to indicate that that's where the change in testing occurred. But, um, you know, I would like to have seen it much higher. However, if you look at mathematics, there is an anomaly. There's a few anomalies. Well, there's one anomaly. If you look at grade four, they skyrocketed. Their average national standard score as a, a grade level group grew at an astronomical rate. So what's going on in fourth grade, maybe, you know, that's where I can drill down and find out.
Excuse me, on 108 in math under reading, what was that?
Can you say it to, under?
Uh, 1112, it was a 20.4.
So we had, we had a huge jump.
Jump there.
With our sophomores. Right, very high. So every once in a while, you'll see those. Overall, they're, it's, it's, they're bleak compared to our past achievements in terms of growth.
Yeah, they didn't do all that great. I mean, all the way down, they done their best as sophomores. If you take them all the way down across there.
But if you look at that group when they were freshmen, we were gasping because they only grew seven points the year before. So, you know, it kind of works itself backwards. And it doesn't, as soon as I tell you that's a rule, you know, we can look in here and find the exception. But growth is something that I have been very interested in. Last year, when I provided the board with their AYP report, one of the things I expressed great concern about was the fact that we weren't, we weren't showing growth. You know, we were showing kids who met proficiency, but then there weren't kids who, they might not be proficient, but they're moving forward. And that's what we need to be most concerned about as educators, that kids are getting better year by year. And one of the things that I did see in our AYP report was the fact that we are finally racking up kids who are growing. I mean, it's not as many as, as we want, but we were 000. I mean, we did not have kids who were getting any better. And now we do have kids who are getting better specifically in the area of math. And I'll show you that in August when I bring the AYP report to you. But I don't want to bring that until I have that, that letter. So any questions on the national standard score chart?
You know, you take, I mean, like you would spend, you, you follow that one particular class through the years. And like you said, maybe they hit a high year and you're expected probably not gonna be quite it. But if you average their growth points, we've done a good job of gaining the points over the years as an average as, as what, I mean, what we're trying to do.
Right, I would have, it would have been great for me as an individual who takes great amount of personal responsibility for these scores if our numbers would have been consistent, our growth numbers would have been consistent with last year's. But I haven't, I don't know that I found a school in the state of Iowa who have been pleased with their results this year. I have a group of curriculum directors that I, I like to converse with. I trust their opinions, ask to lose them out pleasant, and they're all, they're in the same boat. Their hair is turning gray as well.
Marcy, what is the number for 11th grader, science, the year 1112? That seems.
Um, it's 2.9. I apologize. I thought I got it changed on all of them. The very last one, Jerry, is that what you're talking about? Yes, it's 2.9. I apologize. There's one word to change. Ended with a "they." So anytime we talk about national standard score, um, we can, we can compare from year to year. And the new tests show that we didn't grow as much as we have in the past. And that's an issue that I'll pay close attention to. I don't have, I don't have a guarantee that this is a test that the state's going to administer next year.
Well, they're not going to long-term because they're part of a consortium, multi-state consortium that is looking at a different test.
Smarter Balance is what the tests are called. And I actually have a copy of some of the test questions and they are much more rigorous than the Iowa assessments. So, uh, I don't know that I think it's a bad test though. They're just tough. They are tough and they are down to the nitty-gritty in terms of alignment with Common Core, so.
It's a much more authentic measure to look at, at this growth and to have it be rigorous than it is to say 41st percentile is proficient and just try to determine their status there.
Who are we talking, who was talking to us about putting too much faith in the scores anyway?
Who do you have to? I mean, our, our status as a school in need of assistance or a district.
Well, I don't mean faith. I mean, worry it. I mean, as long as you got your, your, the way you want it, I mean, and it's working the way you want it, way not to, not to beat yourself up over.
Well, you need multiple measures.
Right.
And we do have multiple measures.
And accountability is a good thing. The level of rigor is appropriate for the grade levels. So I don't want to make excuses. Uh, I do, I, I believe in the data we get. I want to see it improve on the Iowa assessments or smarter balance, whatever it is. But the issue is that's our, that's our public school accountability measure. So until that changes through the state, I, I have to, I have to worry about it. We have to worry about it.
Well, and we want children to show growth.
Right. The areas overall, um, a few things. In terms of accountability and what we're expected to meet, our K8 attendance rate, we met our expectations as a district. And we also met our, our graduation rate as a district. Now, some of you were here and some of you weren't. The graduation rate is a formula that's about this long and it goes back to their ninth grade year. So I'm not going into that formula because you don't want me to. But we did, we met our graduation rate. So in terms of some of our alternate measures of accountability, we were okay on, on some of those. The areas in terms of math that I'm most concerned about are six through eight. All students, our IEP students and our low SES kids. We have some, we have some consistent trends. And the reason that I gave you that thick packet is because I'm not going to go through page by page or anything like that. But I wanted the board to have the information that showed how much our non-free and reduced lunch kids are outperforming our free and reduced lunch kids. And sometimes it's up to and even a little bit beyond 20 percentile points difference. That means if non-SES kids are achieving, if 85% of those kids are proficient or above, then maybe only 65% of our free and reduced lunch kids are proficient or above. And in five years, I want to see that gap close completely. We, we have to, we have to get down to the nitty-gritty in what our kids need in, in our content areas. So I do have great concern for our middle school math achievement and, and reading. Those are the areas, I think, where we haven't done as much incorporation of Common Core. And as we do that, like I had said to Jerry earlier, I do expect to see those numbers go up. Some of the high points, we had Libertyville and Washington. They met all of their areas of accountability within their subgroups. And that's wonderful, but I don't want to rain on their parades. But one of the things we have to keep in mind is they don't have enough individuals in a subgroup to, to be measured the way PENTS is. You know, PENTS is our only three-section building except for third grade. And so we have to keep that in mind when we're looking, when we're looking at achievement. Is that the more students you have in a building, the higher the likelihood that you're going to end up on the list that over.
What is it, Marcy? Is it 10 or 20? What's, what's the number? How many do you have to have a subgroup to have?
Well, it used to be 10 and for 1112 now it's 40 or more. So that's a pretty big difference too between looking at 1011 data and 1112 data. Some of the trends I'll just share with you. We have fewer students in K12 in math and in reading and in science in the advanced categories. A lot of times we talk about our not proficient groups, but now I'm talking about kids who are scoring in what state has determined as the advanced category. Um, and we have fewer kids overall achieving in those areas. Again, there are a few anomaly grades. There's something great going on in math in third grade. And we almost doubled the percentage of students in the advanced category. So need to drill down there a little bit and see what's going well. And this achievement gap is, is consistent in all content areas and in every subgroup. I, I pull up a report that tells us what our areas of greatest need are in math and reading by grade level. And, um, to tell you how slow Iowa testing is right now, our homeschool program, they test in October. And when I, I pulled my mail out today from vacation sometime last week, I got their item analysis report. So I'm not quite sure when to expect ours. We tested in February and I don't have them yet. But it breaks it down. You know, I have general categories. For example, I know in grade three, the area of greatest weakness in mathematics is data analysis. And in reading, the greatest area of weakness, you know, in greatest area in need of improvement for grade three is vocabulary. But these item analysis sheets gives me, and it gives grade level teachers the information that says what types of vocabulary issues are we having? Is it prefixes? Is it suffixes? With data analysis, is it interpreting graphs or is it combining data and putting it into a viewable format? Uh, I don't have that information back yet. So when I get it, you'll get it. Questions on a few of the talking points that I've reviewed? At the end, um, after we go through the annual goal report, these are our annual academic goals for the school year. And this is for all students. So this is grades two through 11 students that were combined in into one percentage. What we did at Vertical Team, I presented a set of goals. We talked about them in small groups. And then I took the feedback and actually did a small bit of revision to, to the goal. So the ones that you're seeing in the packet that start on page 111 are actually revised based on Vertical Team input. So if you look, you know, for the 2011, 2012 school year, you see our reading goal. And then underneath it, you see what, what I call in my own head is the consequence. Did we meet the goal? No. And then I broke down where our numbers actually were. Same for mathematics. You know, we didn't, we didn't make any of our goals this year. If you flipped to 112, that has our science goal on it. If you flipped of 112, that has our science goal on it. And then on to 113, where we have, we had a technology and a culture and climate goal. And those were new goals for 2011, 2012. And the reason that those goals weren't met is because we didn't generate the assessments to get all of the data collected. For the technology goal, I got, again, I got in a hurry. I should have just had the goal be for eighth grade because I knew that's how far I was going to get on. Don't raise your eyebrows anymore. I knew that's how far we were going to get in terms of integration and assessment construction. So the no isn't because of the data from the eighth grade assessments. The no is from the data that, that didn't get collected from four and 12 because we're not that far along yet. And the same way with culture and climate. So the reason that I added those, you know, when we had discussions about adding those is because though we have five-year goals in those areas. And we can't have a five-year goal if we're not looking at our progress towards them on an annual basis. And so that, that was the purpose behind adding them. So if you look on page 114, these are the proposed annual progress report, annual progress goals for the 2012, 2013 school year. One point I'd like to point out on the culture and climate goal on page 114 is that actually integrates our at-risk identifiers into a goal. And those assessments are constructed now. I mean, so we'll start the school year with those assessments ready to go so that we know how to collect the data, respond to it, and then have a summative report. And that's actually going to make my life, Art's life, and Kim's life easier in December when we go to do modified level growth.
So our reading goal for last year that we didn't make was 78.4% of all students. And we're saying that next year, our reading goal, 85% of all students.
Yes. And in terms of being a smart goal, is it, you know, realistic kindly? The reason that we went with 85 had a lot to do with the AMO, you know, the annual measurable objective that's set by the state. And if you look at the 85, 85, that also, we have to start putting that on paper that we expect our kids in, in this SES subgroup to achieve at the same level as our non-SES kids. And so, am I setting this up for failure, Jerry? Perhaps?
That, that goal this year in the child left behind trajectory was around 80%. And then it was slated to go to 87 next year. But we have, as a state, we have a one-year freeze on that. So, you know, we could, we could make that 80% again, you know, or lower. But, you know, this, this is the recognition of we're closer to where we're supposed to be under the current rules. You know, kind of like what Marcy was talking about earlier. You know, we're, right now, this is what we're judged by and what we're supposed to be trying to attain. And that's, I'm going to give a nod to that.
If, if I could have you just grab your, your colored, your colored packet. And just, I'm not asking, I don't want you to look at the name of the test. I don't want you to look at, at the grade level. Just run your eyes across the top of bars. If you just keep flipping, you'll see what I call, I hope you see what I, you know, you can identify it. I call it the wiggle worm. Anything, anything from year to year that goes a little bit like this. And we go up a little bit, we go down a little bit. We go up a little bit, we go down a little bit. If it isn't surpassing a five percentile point increase, then there's no systemic improvement. It's, it's an anomaly. It's a standard error of measurement. It's nothing sustainable. So the other reason for the jump. So if you see that specifically on the ones that are green, blue, red, and then blue, blue, I don't know why heart did that, but not the ones so much that are blue, white, and yellow, but the ones that have varying shades of blue on it, you'll see that we kind of do this. You know, if we do go up next year, we're going to go down maybe that much. It's all about a one to four percentile point increase or decrease. And it's, it's time for some serious change specifically in the areas of literacy. So that's, that's the other reason, Jerry, for the 85%.
I'd also like to see more of our proficient move into our advanced.
Sometimes that comes out in building goals. And so you'll see a graphic organizer that has our five-year goals aligned with what the board proves is our annual goals. And then you'll see it aligned with building goals. To do an increase in an advanced area at your district level, you have to keep in mind that's grades two through 11 and that gets pretty watered down. It makes more sense at a building level where we can identify by grade levels. And there's actually a recommendation on the goals on page 114 in a little bit. I won't go into 115 because I'm sure at this point you'd rather be talking about Brown again. But I do have a chart. You know, if you see Margaret Kelly, you really do need to thank her because she, I inherited an exquisite system of archive data. And even though the assessments have changed, I don't know how many boards have an opportunity to sit down in one, on one sheet of paper and look at reading achievement scores from 2001 to 2012. So I really just had to carry, carry on her torch and then do a little bit of slicing and dicing to keep it going. So you have that information. And what you're looking at on pages 115 through 117, that's the percent of students proficient or above. And so even though this year, the way that proficiency was determined changed, I can still get the information that tells us the percentage of students who hit proficiency as determined this year. So instead of being 40 percentile or above, it, it was a National Standard Score range. So it's a little bit different, but we can still look at it in terms of percent proficient because although it's new for a few of you, some of you have your brains trained this way because it's the only way we've ever looked at achievement data. So the nutshell is we didn't make any of our APR goals. Building principals and myself are not super pleased with our results from this year. We acknowledge the fact that the test has changed. It's much more rigorous. We know there are areas for improvement. And the work that we've done on all areas of professional learning for planning for 2012, 2013, deal, deal with issues of rigor, deal with issues of interpretation of student learning objectives. So I want to sit here in the very near future and say, this went up because teachers did this. This went up because we changed this.
We have a lot of new, young teachers. How, how are we catching them up on our staff development? And, you know, I mean, all the, we had so many, so much training years ago and reading best practices.
We do a little bit of that through our induction. We, that is one of, at the elementary level, that is one of the beauties of Wednesdays is because we're meeting as grade level teams. And so if you're a new third grade teacher, you have an opportunity to roll up your sleeves and really work with the grade level expectations with a variety of teachers, you know, veteran. So the experience relays. One of the things that Chris and I have spoken about, spoken briefly about is the fact that we don't need to overhaul our reading program at the elementary level, but we need to restructure, reframe, and recommunicate it so that all teachers, I would say anyone new in the last five years knows what expectations are, what it looks like, what the behaviors should be, you know, for students at each grade level, what the data should show, and then what their actions should be to make sure that performance is increasing. So it's just more of a recommunication or a reorganization. And so that will occur again through Wednesdays. And a lot of it, Jerry, you know this, is baptism by gunfire. You know, learning on the fly, asking the right question to the principal, grabbing me by the sleeve when I walk by, and talking to someone down the hall in addition to the professional support that we get.
Not being afraid to ask for help, you know.
And understanding that that's their expectation. You know, making sure that it's a clear professional expectation.
Then our teachers, we're not, our teachers, until they get here, don't know any, I mean, they don't get Iowa Core in their, in their education at all, to start with.
You're talking about new teachers or teachers moving on to new teachers? It varies a little bit with, with the programs. That's something that gets talked about by the DE and the legislature, too, is trying to have a standard set of expectations for teacher preparation programs because it varies a lot right now.
I had an opportunity to work with William Penn student teachers, UNY student teachers, and MUM student teachers this year. And I would say there were varying degrees of knowledge and cluelessness on it. And a lot of it for student teachers depends on their placement, with whom they're working in their initial placement, whether or not they understand it. Reading about the Iowa Core out of a book is not the same as being expected to implement it. And so our teachers know a heck of a lot more about it than, than pre-service teachers or, you know, some other teachers in different districts, not all. I mean, we're pretty great, though, Jerry. Try it all night.
Yep. We're not quite perfect yet.
Well, I kind of... I got a little carried away there in a moment.
So other questions before the recommendation? I, I do really hope, and I know you'll all do this in your spare time, I would not have printed all of these bar graphs off if I didn't want you to take a look at them. And so please feel free to call me anytime outside of the meeting if you want to talk about it. I'm sure you all will.
We'll move on to technology.
Yeah, you're going to get the Reader's Digest version. But if I hit something you want illustration or expansion on, let me know. I want to start with talking about the past year and highlight some of the things that were accomplished. And that obviously impacts some of our goal setting for the coming year. But I'm going to start with the projects that were completed. And there were a lot of small projects that I'm not going to mention. What I'm really mentioning, too, are the projects that involved a lot of money. Because from your perspective, it's, budget was very important this year for technology. So some of the things that we were able to accomplish during this school year, we added a laptop cart at Pence that had 26 laptops. We added a laptop cart at Washington that had 26 laptop carts. We put a new lab in on the first floor at the high school with 30 workstations. Through Title I money with Marcy, we were able to put a middle school Title I card in that included 20 laptops. We purchased a 30 netbook cart for use at the high school for the coming year. But I purchased it out of last year's money. And we did the same thing for the middle school. We have a 30 netbook cart for the middle school that will begin using this year, but I purchased it out of 11, 12 funds. Final spending information for you. The only caveat I'll put on this is that there could be some accruals that'll come in that Kim and I have no way of knowing for sure because obviously you don't accrue something until you find out about it after the fact. But if we just look at the numbers for this year compared to last year, right now, the numbers look a little better probably than they ultimately will be for about $198,000 below last year's spending levels through June of this year. That reflects a reduction in general fund spending of $70,000 and a reduction in PEPAL spending of $120,000. To give you an idea of some of the ways that some of these cuts were accomplished, obviously, district-wide, there had to be a different outlook in terms of technology. We could not, I could not have accomplished the reductions in spending without the support of the rest of the admin team. Because ultimately, when I say no to people, they do what any, I don't mean to characterize people as children, but if dad says no, you go to mom. If mom says no, you go to dad. So when they heard no from me, they went to their building principals. And gratefully, from my perspective, the building principals backed up the fact that we, we need to cut back this year. So we're not going to say yes to everything. We took the approach that instead of being able to solve a problem the next day, if we had to spend a little more time to save a little bit of money, that's what we tried to do. So one of the areas that we did cut back in spending on was contracted service. And just to give you one example, there's a company that we've worked with for, based on the records I could find, the last seven or eight years. It's Network Computer Solutions. They come in and do a lot of the troubleshooting on the network with major issues. In the previous two school years, we spent a total of over $31,000 with them. So it's an average of a little over $15,000 for the previous two school years. This year, our spending came in at below $4,900 with them. One of the main reasons we were able to accomplish that was through efforts of the people that worked with me. Jason Roberts took on a much bigger role in terms of network support this year. So the things that we were going in the past to network solutions for, Jason took on responsibility for himself. And 90% of the time, he was able to come up with the solution we needed. When we couldn't come up with a solution in-house, then we brought them in. So I'd say the savings came about the fact that we were willing to put in a little more effort on our side. And we scaled back our expectations on how quickly things could get solved. If we were going to have to spend $1,000 to fix it in one day, but we could do it ourselves in a week, we chose to do it ourselves in a week. And that's one of the ways that we were able to make savings. But I felt like it was important to mention how much of the savings we were able to recognize this year came of the efforts of other people. My staff and then the district staff in general. They found ways to get by with less. They were willing to be patient when it took a little bit longer to get a solution to a problem. And I think it was the cooperative nature of everybody involved that led to the financial successes we were able to recognize this year.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your numbers? It was $120,000 less in PEPAL and what was the other?
About $70,000 less in general fund. So totals around 190. Like I said, there could be some bills that'll come in that'll adjust that a little bit, but hopefully not by a big amount. Some good news, some things that have happened in the last half of the year. Last month, I got a call from the React Center in Cedar Rapids, which is the volunteer group that is part of the Rockwell Collins family. It's a group of retired engineers. They take equipment that Rockwell Collins cycles out. They refurbish it, repair it, restore it, and then they make it available to nonprofits at no cost. We got a call last month and Ryan Metz and I drove up and we got 58 flat panel monitors that were one year old. They were from a hospital in the Quad Cities that had made a software change that forced them to go to a widescreen monitor. And so we got 58 of these nice 17-inch flat panel monitors. And the cost was just Ryan and I driving them up, picking them up and bringing them back. So having carried about 100 of the 40-pound CRT monitors out of the middle school in June, we're hoping to replace some of those with some of these and not carry them back in when things are ready to go in August. The other piece of good news that we got just last week, I finally heard back from the Rock Island Arsenal, I think I mentioned to you last November, that I had tried to get on the Department of Defense list for getting some equipment from them. And I got an email from Lieutenant Colonel at the Arsenal. And he said that mill strips have been submitted for approval. And you have to remember, we're dealing with the Army, we're dealing with the government. So there's going to be a red tape circle to work our way through. But he has sent in approval for us to receive 180 desktops, 200 laptops, and 50 flat-screen monitors. And they'll be approximately two to three years old once we get them. But again, our only cost is going and picking them up and then bringing them back. And I've dealt with the Arsenal three times in the past in former school districts. And we've generally seen about 95% of what we get is absolutely usable and in great shape. There's about a 5% where you might take apart from this and put it with this to get it to work. But I think it's really going to help us with this coming year with being able to cycle out some of our older equipment and bring in something that's not brand new, but something's definitely better than what we had in place. And hopefully it'll get us a little more on track for having a true replacement cycle with our machines, like I mentioned with you, my goal last fall. Our summer projects... Our summer projects, just to give you a quick update on what we're trying to accomplish, we are redoing the elementary labs and putting them back into place. That involves some electrical work, it involves significant wiring work, and then obviously the purchase of some equipment. Things are on track with that. We are going to bring in an outside contractor to assist us with some of the data wiring because with everything that the district had going this summer, Brent just doesn't have time to get to all the projects we needed done within a 10-week span. So we are bringing in somebody to do a couple of small projects for us. One of the first things they'll do is the finish up of the work over at the Lincoln Center. Brent has done 80% of the electrical work over there and the wiring work, but there's some finish up work that's a little bit tedious for a person working by themselves. So we're going to bring in these guys and let them finish up the work that Brent started over there. They'll start working next Monday. They'll do the data and power for the OC move and they will provide the data drops necessary for the Young House project. And they expect to be done within 10 to 14 days. So we should be good to have everything ready to hand over pretty close to August first for those two things. You may be aware, if you were already on the board, maybe not if you're new, but when this building was built, part of the original plan was to have a teaching lab downstairs. And I think once everything began to happen, in order to save some money, that room didn't actually get completed the way that it was originally planned. So we are also going to finish that room up this summer. They'll start Monday on that. They will be putting data drops in there so that we have some dedicated machines for when we need to bring staff in for training. They're going to bring power into the room. Zer is going to come out on Wednesday and put power in the room to accommodate the equipment. And so what we'll have is a setup that'll have 12 permanent PCs laid out in the room and then we'll have spacing that would accommodate bringing in 12 laptops, for example, if teachers wanted to come in. But that way, we actually have a venue on site where we can do training with staff, whether it be teachers, whether it be secretarial, associates, administrators. It gives us another option here outside of the regular buildings. So we're kind of excited about that. And then we are doing a major project at Washington on top of the lab rewiring that we're doing. I spoke with you last fall that our existing buildings, other than the middle school, infrastructure is an issue for us because of the age of the wire that's in there. The district was on the forefront in the state in terms of putting things out there. That's the good news. The bad news is it's old, so we need to start replacing. So we've got Washington on our plate for this year. We're going to rewire the entire building for data. They will begin work next Monday, as I said, on these projects. And if we determine at the end of the first week that we can finish Washington before school starts, they'll go ahead and finish Washington now. If we become concerned that we won't be able to finish Washington in time for school to start, then they'll do what they can now and then we'll finish it up during Christmas vacation so that we don't end up impacting learning and what would normally take place within the buildings.
A quick couple of questions.
Absolutely.
So for your elementary labs, your rewiring is just updated?
It's data wiring.
Okay, because since they were computer labs previously, wouldn't that stuff be there?
Yes, the issue is that some of the original wiring is over 10 to 12 years. And so when they talk about data wiring, there was CAT III originally that came out, and then CAT IV, then CAT V, and now it's CAT VI. The only thing to know is that a higher number is better. So we're rewiring it so that once we have the district on, or we have the ability as a network, as a district, to bring gigabyte down to the desktops, this new wiring will allow that. Right now, the wiring that we had only allows us to bring 10 megabytes down to the desktop, which the analogy for that is it's like having a souped-up Mustang and you can only put enough gas in it to get you a mile down the road. So we want our network to start being able to support the equipment that we have in place. And that's the reason for doing that.
And then my other question is, now that you are implementing the elementary labs again, are they still going to have equipment in the classrooms?
Yes. Everything we're doing in the labs is new. These are my new things for this year. We're not pulling anything back from the classroom because the things that were accomplished with the equipment that went out of the labs are so good that we don't want to impact that. So we're adding the labs on top of everything else that already exists. We're not taking anything back or pulling anything away.
So is there a plan for replacing equipment in the classrooms as it, as it needs to be? I mean, do we have a budget set for that?
Yes, but it's not going to start this year. That's part of the equipment cycle that we've talked about building. This year is the first year that we're actually going to try to start cycling out old and replacing it with better or new. And then what we need to have going forward is kind of a two-pronged approach. We still want to be adding new things when it's prudent and advisable, but we also want to make sure that we're replacing and keeping up to date the existing equipment that we have.
Will we be replacing computer teachers? In the past, we had a teacher who was in the computer lab. And then when we got rid of those labs, some of those teachers did, went to do other things.
They've been teaching in the computer lab.
There's, I mean, there's been no plan for adding staff.
I guess that's kind of the bottom line. I mean, if I get the direct, I mean, there's some other areas where we did replace staff that it would have been pretty advantageous to do it. Now, if we get to a point where, you know, I don't have to worry about staffing levels and our budgets, so if we start looking at what we can add back, I'm all for it. But I'm not sure we're exactly there right now.
So how are we utilizing these?
Okay, the plan with the labs, there are two basic, labs are probably not going to be utilized at the elementary the way people are used to them, having been done in the past. That's one thing everybody needs to understand. There are two big things we want to accomplish. We have a software piece that's called Fast Math that we piloted this year with several grade levels. And we want to use it 2 through 5 next year across the district. Part of what needs to happen is they need to go in four times a week for 15 minutes at a time to use this software. So one of the things the labs at the elementary allows to do is actually create a schedule where if you're a second grade teacher, you know that at these, these four days out of the week, at these times, you're going to be able to take your kids in to do this math software. So about half of the day will get consumed to satisfy that goal. Then the other thing, we purchased some things in the past year that are curricular-based things. There are language arts software pieces, there are math software pieces. There are things that people traditionally do online. But we purchased server-based versions because it allowed us to use Microsoft Money. As long as you own the software, you can purchase it through Microsoft. But if you're leasing it or using a service, you can't use your Microsoft Money. So we purchased a number of titles. There are three or four titles that are really good for K-2. There are three or four titles that are really good for 2-5. And then we've got four to five titles that are considered to be good for 3 to 6. And we want to have a schedule set up where at least once a week, a teacher takes their class in for this work, where it's the teacher working with the students. There's not a lab associate, there's not a lab teacher. It basically comes down to the teacher having a comfort level working with the students. And that's one of the things I'll be working on this fall, is improving the comfort level of our elementary staff in working with these software pieces. But between the scholastic math that would be almost every day and then getting those classes in once or twice a week, that's going to consume about 75% of the lab schedule. And then any blocks of time that would be available will be made open to the staff where if you have a project you want to take your kids in, rather than bringing laptops into your room if it's more convenient for you to go to the lab, as long as the time slot's available, you can sign up for it and they can do that on a weekly basis.
So I think that it's great that we're starting to use our technology to integrate and do mathematics and things like that. Are there technology-related things that our kids in elementary schools are now missing because we don't have a technology teacher per se or?
No, I think there's, there's, we have really, really bright spots in with our instructors. And then we have teachers who just don't have a natural comfort level with it. Part of the work that Tina and I completed with some, we picked some high flyers this summer to work on this K-4 technology curriculum is to identify what the essential concepts and skills are and to make sure that there is guaranteed viable curriculum for all students at a grade level and that we can provide some systemic support in terms of making sure that teachers feel comfortable. But it's, I mean, let's face it, up until this point, it's really been kind of optional. If you can make a poster or utilize technology, some teachers would, you know, make the poster. And that's not always the wrong choice. But, you know, we're working at making it a little more systemic than it has been in the past.
But for instance, keyboarding?
Right.
How do they learn, at what stage do they learn proper keyboarding so that you're not having to?
We'll show you. We really hammered out a K-12 keyboarding.
I could tentatively tell you that the place that we'll try to make sure that everybody has the same experience, because this comes back to where you talked about, what happens when a student comes into the district. For example, if you do something for everybody in the district in 7th grade and they move in in 9th grade, how do you catch them up? So one of the approaches that we're taking is that with this new course that they developed for the 8th graders, it is going to involve a quarter of keyboarding at the beginning of the school year. So at least we can guarantee that somebody that was here for 8th grade will have had the instruction from start to finish that you should have to be a competent keyboarding aficionado. And then hopefully, we'll be able to push that up so that there's also a similar course, unless it may already be at the high school and I'm just not aware of it. But minimum 8th grade, there are some things that we do with kids in 4th grade and 5th grade. But the problem with that is that not everybody gets ready at the same time, maturity-wise and physically, to be successful with keyboarding. And it's, so teaching at a lower level can sometimes cause more problems than benefits because you'll have kids that'll develop bad habits because their hands weren't big enough when they learned. Or you had an instructor that just wasn't forceful about saying, "Don't look at your fingers." So rather than having 25 people try to teach it on different grade levels, we wanted to make sure that everybody would have at least one common experience with keyboarding. And this year, that'll happen in 8th grade.
This from the hot and pet.
Emily O'Connor had her way of teaching.
I didn't take typing, I took music.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's all carried over. If you hit the wrong thing, she hit you.
Okay, don't do that. Okay, well, thank you.
The only thing I have left then is our fall projects coming up. One big one is the middle school. I'm just not even going to talk about that anymore. But we expect the middle school to be a challenge for the technology department when we get towards the end of August. But then beyond that, once we've gotten that dealt with, looking forward, we want to work on the infrastructure at the middle school and the high school in terms of the wiring that's in those buildings. Because right now, this year, the focus is sort of on the elementary. And then for the next year, we want to make sure we hit a couple of projects that deal with both of those buildings. But we haven't wanted to push forward with the high school yet until we see what you guys actually end up doing with the high school. So I don't mean to shortchange them, but I didn't want to go in and do a lot of things and then have it get undone by whatever decision gets made on the high school project. So that's one of the reasons the focus this year is on the elementaries.
But aren't you kind of updating your labs over the middle school now?
Yes, yes, yes. The middle school, basically, the wiring and everything. But I'm talking in terms of the middle school with some of the older equipment. We have some PCs over there that are seven or eight years old. So if this Arsenal equipment actually comes in, our hope is that we can cycle in some of the two or three-year-old equipment to replace the eight or nine-year-old equipment. So that's where the, yes, yes. And that's why, I'm sorry, you don't have my notes in front of you. I have some as equipment, some as infrastructure in my talking point. Sorry.
I just. Any other questions?
We don't have any way of updating the software, then you're saying. We're doing machine, we're doing, we're changing equipment altogether.
I'm not sure if I understand your question, Jerry, I'm sorry.
I mean, waiting on the Arsenal, the equipment coming from the Arsenal and replacing something that's seven and eight years, but we can't speed that up any other way. Other than, other than getting rid of it.
Right, other than if I would just go ahead and buy more new equipment this year than I was planning on. And that's what I'm trying to avoid. We're trying to get, the examples, when I listed for you the things that we accomplished this past year, we added 162 devices in the district that weren't in there the year before through those projects. So that's why I was saying, we're still trying to expand on one front, but we're starting to redo on the other front to make sure that we don't get down the road and have 1,400 pieces of equipment that all need to replace the same year because they all die the same year. One of the things I talked to you about when I came in the spring, when I gave you my tentative numbers was, you know, I want to make sure that we've kept money back in case there were any disasters. We got lucky, we didn't have any disasters. That's why the numbers that I gave you for now look basically almost as good as the ones we had in March. We, we had a good spring. We didn't have anything great that was beyond normal. If we can get one more year like that, then I can probably start to accomplish a little more with the equipment replacement front with new equipment as opposed to looking for these other alternatives.
I certainly appreciate you.
Well, I think this is a better way rather than.
Well, one major thing we're going to have to think about too is the teacher textbooks. Yep. Because that was a one-time purchase that was funded with Microsoft Money that will never come back again. So that's the other thing we're starting to plan for and stress over is how are we going to come up with what we need to to replace all of those? Because that was about a quarter million dollars.
So that's where we got to be careful. I mean, they're changing technology all the, all the, that's the idea. They're going to make money if they don't change it.
Right, right. I'm sorry.
But we fall into that, we fall into that trap, we're going to.
It's what we're trying to avoid.
That's where we're going to be.
I was just asking how old those are, two years.
Two years, yeah. This will be our third year.
I appreciate your efforts going through the red tape to find those these, this used equipment. That's a lot of extra effort on your part. I know you're already very, very busy. I appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Sure.